Good evening and welcome to the third and final segment of our forum this evening. I'd like to welcome the candidates for USD 470 School District. And on my far left is Kate Riley. Next to her is Damon Mendoza. Immediately on my right is Rhoda McGlothlin Ramirez. And next to her is Lance Niles and Lori Barnes on my far right. Welcome to the candidates. We'll begin this evening by giving you each two minutes to speak to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're seeking this position. And after that, we will continue with questions and answers for each of you. There is a timer. You can see her immediately in front of us and she'll have mean and ugly looking cards to share with you if you get a little bit too close to the end. So Ms. Barnes, I'm going to invite you to speak first.
Good evening. Thanks for coming out tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to stand up here tonight and let you know about myself and why I'm running for this position. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Lori Barnes. I'm married to Zach Barnes and I've lived here for 19 years. Moved here immediately after getting married. So I have a transplant, wasn't born, raised here. I have two children, Lucas, who is an eighth grader at the middle school, and Kennedy, who is a fourth grader at Sacred Heart Catholic School. I, just a little bit about myself, I moved around a lot when I was a kid due to my dad's job. So we finally settled in Olathe for my middle school and high school years. So I graduated from Olathe South High School with a huge class, 6A, about 600 students. So I immediately then went to, got a track scholarship to Emporia State University and graduated from there with a Bachelor's of Science. Let me just tell you about, most important, why I'm here and why I'm running. As most of us up here, I have a vested interest in the schools. I want our kids, not just mine, to be successful and I have opportunities and have the best opportunities in whatever path they choose academically. For the most part, I think Ark City meets a lot of those needs, but I also see areas where we can improve and continue to make our schools even better. I'm open-minded, willing to learn, and not afraid to ask tough questions or think outside the box. I want community members to know that I will listen to all sides and research thoroughly before I form an opinion on any matter. Ark City wasn't always my home, but I'm proud to call it my home now and raise my family here. We have an amazing community and I want our schools to be the backbone to why people choose to move here or stay here and also how we can get good teachers and retain the amazing ones that we have. The school board and administration has done a great job and I would love the opportunity to make it stronger and better.
Good evening. My name is Lance Niles. I'm 46-years-old, married to Tamara for the almost last 19 years. I have two children, Natalie and Will. Natalie's 13, Will's 12, both at the Ark City Middle School. We're also hosting a foreign exchange student there this year, Luthia Laura, who's 15 and at the high school. So my parents, Bonnie and Bob Niles, have owned multiple businesses downtown Arkansas City and currently own some on realty. My brother is Dr. Nathan Niles and his wife Amy, and they operate Niles Family Dentistry also in downtown Arkansas City. I'm a graduate of Arkansas City High School, Wichita State University, and Louisiana State University. For the last 21 years, I've made my career in the banking industry. I'm currently employed as the President of UniState Bank for the Arkansas City Market. Arkansas City is a very important place, a very important place in my life and my whole family's life. I've spent a lot of time working in the community, served, currently serving on the USD 470 Board of Education, filled Dr. Waters' role when he vacated that back in July. Current member, Paul Harris fellow and past president of the Rotary Club. I currently am on the advisory board for Cali County Big Brothers Big Sisters and I'm also a big brother to Michael, who's been a lot of fun. Past president and chairman of the South Central Kansas Medical Center Board of Directors, past president and board member of Arkansas City Chamber of Commerce. I've been on the Alcohol Committee, past chairman there. I graduated Leadership Cali County in Arkansas City, or Cali County in 2007. I'm also a past board member of Two Rivers Developmental Support, past president, board member of Arkansas City Baseball Association. Currently the manager of a 12-under travel baseball team and also a sixth grade basketball team. I want to continue to serve on the Board of Education to ensure that we provide the highest quality public education by attracting and retaining excellent administrators, teachers, and staff. My vision is to help children develop and strive for their goal. I want children to believe they can achieve their dreams and I'll commit to working with administrators, teachers, and parents to help kids realize those dreams. I want to wish the other candidates the best of luck.
Hi, my name is Rhoda McGlothlin Ramirez and I am married to Patrick Ramirez. We have a blended crew of three boys, Britton age 16, Spencer age 13, and Samuel age 8. I've had the honor of working at Cali College as the Director of Library Services for the past 18 years. I also am an Arkansas City born and raised resident, graduating from Arkansas City High School in 1991. After graduation, I immediately began working full-time at the Arkansas City Public Library and then while continuing to work full-time, I earned an Associate of Arts degree from Cali College, a Bachelor of Arts degree in Education from Southwestern, a Master's of Library Science from Emporia State, and a Master's of Education from Wichita State. I believe in education and I believe in the importance of a higher degree, but I also believe in the importance of a skilled workforce. Some of you may remember my father, George Hayne, and if you knew him, you also knew that he was a mechanic, a very gifted mechanic. I often heard him referred to as a master of his trade. But what you may not have known about my dad is that his formal education extended only as far as the seventh grade. That summer, he had a heat stroke and was bedridden for several weeks, and after seventh grade, he decided to enter the workforce instead of go back to school. My father taught me the value of hard work and his number one goal in life was to provide for his family. However, in addition to hard work, I also learned indirectly that not having a degree of any kind lessened your mobility of moving upward in a company and often even in life. My mother is now 86-years-old and the greatest lesson she taught me is that we all enter and exit this world by the grace of God and that it's the second leg of that journey that's the most important. Like most, my parents wanted the best for their children and of course, they hope that each of us, my siblings and I, would have more opportunities in life than what they had. I am passionate about education. I built my career around it, but I'm even more passionate about my children and I want the absolute best for them. Now, my service may not be the best, but it is the best that I have to offer. I have absolutely no agenda for wanting to serve on this board other than as a way of contributing back to this community. Like Lance, I also am comforted by the fact that with all of these qualified candidates, no matter how this election goes, this board will be made up of quality individuals.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Damon Mendoza and I want to thank everyone for sticking around. With the exception of a few in the back, I think the good-looking ones stuck around here, so thanks for sticking around. Again, Damon Mendoza, I've lived in Arkansas City most of my life. The only exception has been my six years in the Marine Corps. I was born in Wichita, so we moved to Arkansas City at three-years-old as well. I've served many different roles in the, in the community as coach, different boards, Leadership Cali County, quite a few, but I'll see if I can run through the list. The, I'm current chair to the Finance Committee for the Arkansas City Chamber of Commerce. I'm a current softball coach and several other organizations I've served, served with. But I, I think what I can share with this group here is the big reason why I want to serve, number one is to, is just to give back to the community, along with all those other roles and everyone here has a valid point of wanting to give back. From a young age, I, I learned from my, especially from my father, but my, my family, was that sacrifice for others. So most of the things that I do when it comes to volunteer work, it's been about giving back, sacrificing for others, and thinking of others before self. It was heightened when I went into the Marine Corps as well, when you're always thinking of others before yourself, you're thinking of team, not self. As a coach, when you're coaching your own son, your own daughter, I mean, really, a lot of times, folks will look out for gaining for themselves first. I've always been about others before self. But with that said, I appreciate the opportunity, look forward to the possibility of serving.
Hi, y'all. I'm Sarah Kate. I put Sarah on there. I usually just go by Kate because that's my middle name, but legally, my, that's not my name. My name's Sarah, so on all my stuff, you'll see Sarah Kate Riley, but you can call me Sarah Kate, whatever, it's fine. We have, I am the odd one out because I am not from Arkansas City and I've not been here very long. It feels like a really long time. We've been here four years. My husband Jonathan is a pharmacist at Graves Drug and I am a stay-at-home, work-at-home, you know, mom of four children. We have a seventh grader, a fifth grader, a third grader, and a first grader. I have a background in arts and in education. I'm passionate about education. I think that it's one of the few things in life that, given the opportunity, anyone can use it to achieve any type of success that they want to. We have, I've lived a lot of places. I was born and raised in Houston, Texas, and we've lived, I think, this, I counted it up, this would be the sixth school district that I would have been a part of, so I know a lot. I, I may be young, but I have a lot of experience. I have seen a lot of things. I know what works in schools, I know what works in small communities, and I know what doesn't. I know that Cali County is not really growing, it's shrinking. I know that resources are going to get scarcer. I know that our school districts, our students are going to be competing, that that's going to increase. I know right now, our school districts don't, our school district doesn't look very good. It's pretty mediocre. Nationally, it's unranked. We don't have a very high rate of seniors taking advanced placement classes or participating in college-level classes, and that's something that puts them behind when you look on a national scale. So I'm committed to education. I'm also committed to making decisions based on what does the most good for the most people most of the time. I don't have a lot of connections to the community in ways, I guess, I don't want to say connections, I don't have any loyalties. I don't feel any obligation. My name doesn't really mean anything here, my parents aren't from here, you know, and so I think that I, out of all of the candidates, could probably offer the most objective viewpoint on things. So yeah, I'd like the opportunity. I think I have a lot to offer and I look forward to working with Arkansas City Schools. Thanks.
Thank you all. We'll begin our questioning this evening and I'll ask Ms. McGlothlin Ramirez to take the first turn at answering this question. What three things would you like to see accomplished during your term?
I guess I can start by saying I was true when I said I have no agenda for wanting to serve on the school board because I don't have a list, a laundry list of three things that I want to accomplish. But I can tell you some of the qualities that I think I would try to serve with. The profession that I chose is one of support. It's a one of research and I consider myself that I'm quick to research and slow to speak and I really do enjoy a support, service-oriented profession. So something that I would, would enjoy doing is being a support to the school district, to the staff. Something else I am excited about is technology, so I would certainly promote or be excited about projects or courses, classes that involve technology. I was very excited when I went into the high school lab last year and saw the new equipment that they had there and the dual monitors at every station. I guess I'm going to stop with two before I sound too foolish.
Thanks. I think three things that, that kind of hot buttons for me this year going into the election season, teacher retention. Every year, we are scrambling at the end to try and fill all the teacher spots and we've got to do a better job of getting young teachers to stay in our community. Second thing, we've got to do everything we can possibly do to increase test scores. And a lot of that has to do with parents pushing their children to take more advanced classes at a younger age, so when they're going to take those tests, they've actually studied some of the material that's on it. So that's, that's the other thing and we, and then, you know, and to couple along with that, the last thing I'd say is just increase course offerings in collaboration with Cali College. You heard, those of you that were here heard the college talk about how important they feel that is and I strongly agree and we've got to do a better job of, of making sure that everyone has the opportunity to take those classes.
Well, I'm going to sound like a broken record because my number one thing also is recruiting and maintaining talented educators. I think that, similar to some of the things that the city commissioners that were up here talking about, keeping young people here, we have to promote this town and having a strong backbone, strong educators here, that's what brings people here and then that also brings talented teachers and educators here. So maintaining the awesome teachers that we have now and then being able to recruit new talented teachers, I think will, would be my number one. But my second, just like Lance, is focusing on improving our test scores. When you look at Arkansas City compared to the state of Kansas, we are really, really low on our test scores and I'm not sure if that's because a lot of our students aren't taking the ACT and SATs. And I, and I know that the high school has recently added a five-week course where they are helping the students prepare for those. I think it would be a great thing if the high school could also have a junior day where they actually, all the juniors take the ACT and SAT after we've prepped them because that looks good for our schools because we have a targeted score on the map with Kansas. And then like Rhoda, bringing technology into the classrooms, both elementary and high school, because I think that just makes our kids more ready for the future, more ready for going out into the workforce or as times are changing, being able to, you know, get on Excel and, you know, communicate with people properly. And if we, you know, keep promoting the technology in our schools, then that makes our students more ready for Cali, for the, you know, higher classes that they need to take and then ready for the workforce if that's what they choose to do, you know, not go onto a four-year school.
Mr. Mendoza?
I would echo some of, one of the things already mentioned and that's improving scores of testing. That's one thing I would echo. Also, the second thing, along the same lines as what's been said, is preparing our students for the future. So whether that be some type of life lessons, some, some type of life, life lessons course that would prepare them for college and for life in general, that'd be another area. But the biggest need, I believe, is that we need to improve is funding. Now, a lot of it's done by local tax, local taxation, state, as well as federal funding. And so finding ways of improving funding for our teachers and our students. I mean, it was just last week, on October 2nd, that the Kansas Supreme Court ruled that the current legislation, the, the funding is inadequate. So they're giving some time, I believe, until June for them to improve that. So those are my three.
Okay, I'm going to always, you know, increase test scores, definitely. I think that we could be better utilizing some of the resources that we already have in the schools. For example, Khan is a program that's highly underutilized that would definitely boost test scores because it's a self-teaching program. My experience with our children that use it is they only use it for one subject and it's incredibly limited in what they use it and they don't really unlock the full potential of the program. So that would kind of go into my next point of, yes, it's great if you want to bring technology into the classroom. I get that, everybody wants to talk about cutting-edge technology, blah, blah, blah. It's not, it doesn't matter how much money you spend on tech if you're not providing good instruction with the tech. Also, we should think about, do we really need to provide so much technology to children that have smartphones? Are we just not utilizing the computer that's in the hand of all of our students? I know the middle school, they're not even allowed to have their phones out. So that would be something that I would look at, ways to use the technology that the students already have. Also, I think it's important continuing the collaboration with Cali as far as college prep work and pre-prep work. Also, I'd like to see extending the collaboration as far as facilities, especially athletic facilities, as resources get more scarce. I think that combining athletic facilities for the college, the town, and the school district would be ideal.
Mr. Mendoza, I'll just let you keep the microphone and begin the next question. What difficulties do you foresee in the near future for USD 470 and what would you do to prepare for them?
Again, I go back to the funding. That's going to be the continued struggles for all school districts across the state. As we, as I've already mentioned, you know, Kansas Supreme Court deeming the legislation funding to be inadequate for our, for our school districts, so that would be, as I mentioned before, what to do to fix that would be finding different ways, as I mentioned before, local taxation, state funding, federal funding, finding ways to improve that. I'm right here, you don't have to call me. That's it.
Ms. Riley?
I think I kind of covered that in my first two statements about foreseeable problems. I mean, always like Damon said, you know, we're going to be trying to figure out what to do with less resources, trying to do more with less, and really that, I think that just comes down to smart planning. And also, I think we have to look at increasing the change in populations in our, in the town. I don't really know what that looks like, but are we meeting the needs of a diverse population? One thing I've noticed, especially with my younger children in elementary school, is there's a large population of students that speak Spanish and I feel like the school district, while they do meet the needs of those students, they are missing an opportunity to include bilingual immersion programs in the school and I think that's something that everyone could benefit going forward. I think that in this day and age, if you think that you can, you can be unilingual and be successful in the world, that that's kind of a debut to have.
Continue with Ms. Barnes.
So far, I agree with Damon and Kate that funding obviously is going to be the number one issue. It's, it's not unknown that, it's on the news every day about funding with state of Kansas and now a Supreme Court overturning and having to, asking our senators and legislators to go back and, and hit the slate again, finding more money for our children. So funding obviously is going to be a big issue. And then, you know, like I said in my other statements, keeping teachers, keeping teachers here, bringing in new ones, replacing administration that's leaving or retiring out. And then really just more collaboration, I think with, it would be nice to see more collaboration with Cali. I don't see that as a problem, but I, we, we miss a lot with Cali here, connecting the high school in Cali and I'd like to see some more collaboration there and I think that would help with some of our funding issues if we can work together with them. So those are, those are my two, top two.
A couple extra ones that I see, facilities maintenance and a maintenance plan. It's hard to plan for some of the maintenance that has to be done on some pretty old buildings. The new high school is 30-years-old, you know. So, you know, just having a plan in place, but relates back to the funding, you know, so, and how that's, that's done. But that's, that's certainly a different, the thought. And then, you know, something that, we don't know when it happens, but I guarantee you at some point it's going to happen, is replacement of key administrators. We want Ron to stay as long as he possibly can, but that's not going to be forever. And so we've got to have quality plan in place to attract those, those people as well as the teachers. So again, I'll release the funding also.
And of course, I'm going to agree with the funding and the lack of state funds, but as I was glancing over the Kansas report card that was on the Board of Educate, or the USD 470 website the other day, I was also startled by some other statistics that had to do with funding. When I was looking across the district, I believe the number I saw was about 70% of our district is economically disadvantaged. So it's not just the lack of state funds, it's the lack of local funds as well that create a lot of issues and challenges and it certainly is a burden for all of us. Another issue I think that's difficulty is how to keep the students engaged. This is a very challenging age group that, you know, like we talked about the blessings of technology, there's also the curse of technology and so many different things that are pulling their attention in different directions. Even at the college, when students come into the library to work on computers, to study, to do an online test, well, they have their earbuds in and they also have their phones going and there's just every, all this multitasking and my kids are guilty of the same thing. So just how do you use technology in the right direction? I also like to keep things in perspective. I also look at things like the Wichita Eagle paper and I read about the behavior problems that are constant in the school system there and I think to myself, what a blessing we have in this community that things like that are not major issues.
I'll ask you to give the microphone to Mr. Niles. And Mr. Niles, if you would begin answering this question. If elected to the USD 470 Board of Education, do you have time to serve on other community and school boards and committees as a representative of the USD 470 Board?
Yeah, I think, you know, what this question refers to is there are other committees that the school board members have to, have to participate in and be a part of. And so I'm actually currently doing that on the co-op board and it's been, it's been really enlightening, so I certainly do have the time and wouldn't have submitted my name for, on the slate if I, if I wasn't committed to doing and fulfilling the whole job.
So I've actually wanted to run for the school board for a while, but because some challenges at home, my husband travels Monday through Thursday, so being a mom of two young kids, that was a little hard to be able to commit to something like the school board. My kids are older now and a little more self-sustaining, so I decided, you know, now is as good as time as any to throw my hat in. And I did that because I knew I could, could be dedicated with my time and devoted to the extra committees, to the meetings and along with what Lance said, I wouldn't have put my name in if I knew that it wasn't something that I could fulfill all the way.
I would say for the last 16 years, the majority of time has, my time has revolved around my children and their activities. As they were younger, I was certainly involved in the parent-teacher-school associations and every activity that they had going on and serving in a variety of different ways. So as they get older, our time continues to be dedicated in those ways and this is just a different branch of service that extends beyond, you know, guides along school field trips or classroom parties and things like that. And I think it's often said that the people who are busiest are those that often manage time the best and I don't think this is any type of different situation than that.
Ms. Riley?
Yeah, I have a really flexible schedule and I'm also really good at multitasking with my technology, so it should be no problem.
Fortunately or unfortunately, I've had experience in stretching myself too thin, being involved. I think at one point, I was a full-time student coaching two teams, including the traveling team, and working full-time as well as chairman of Leadership Cali County all at one time. And I remember at the, at the time, being asked to join another group and I considered it and realized that that was not the appropriate route to take. So I've learned from that and since then, I've really had a more of a focus as far as what volunteer options I choose. And so going forward, yes, it'd be no problem.
If you would hand the microphone back to Ms. Riley, I'll ask you the next question. Do you feel students should be required to use cursive and it is written in cursive?
Short and long? Short, no. I think that cursive is ever increasingly irrelevant. Most people today don't even write, you just type. However, in order to develop proper hand skills, it's important to learn cursive. So yes, but it's something that could be taught at home on the parents' own time, I think.
As a technologist, I'm kind of torn. I do believe they should be required to write cursive, but at the same time, I do know that it's a, it's a talent that is somewhat going away. But I don't think it's in the near future. So in the, in short term, absolutely should continue writing cursive.
I certainly don't think it is a skill that would hurt anyone to be able to write or read in cursive. They certainly need to be able to recognize the letters. I think there's a lot of people that still write solely in cursive. So we certainly don't want it to look like a foreign language. As a requirement, I don't know that I can answer that, but I do think there should be lessons introduced early on in children's lives that expose them to cursive. I also think typing should be taught very early on in children's lives.
Pretty sure the only thing I write in cursive right now is my signature. So that's, that's kind of a tough one for me to require that. I kind of with Rhoda, as far as, I think the typing's probably gonna be more important, starting that younger than, than cursive, but you do need to be able to learn how to read it. So, you know, hence you probably should be able to learn how to write it too.
As far as a requirement, I don't know that it should be a requirement, but I definitely think it is a trait that every student needs to know how to read and, and write in cursive. There'll come a time in life, you know, in high school, I know, and even in middle school, I see Lucas write a lot of his reports still in cursive. And so it's still being taught and it's still being used. And Kennedy is currently using cursive as well. So I don't think it's a total lost art yet. And I think, you know, it's definitely, as, as our generations get older and we've all grown up using cursive, that our student, our, our kids are still going to need to know how to read and write with that. But I do agree with typing. Typing needs to be introduced much earlier than it is now. It's something that is part of, an integral part of a workforce wherever you go. So it's definitely something that we need to look a little more into as we're doing cursive, but also introducing the typing piece of it a little bit more earlier into the elementary schools.
If you would just begin the next question for me, please. Do you feel it is appropriate to be appointed to a seat while running for election?
Well, my friend Lance, pertains to, I, I really do feel like we needed to fill Dr. Waters' seat so that we could be able to move forward with voting and some of the decisions that need to be made. Lance is, you know, he's, he's a qualified candidate. He's gonna do, he does an awesome job, I'm sure now, serving as an, serving in a position for Dr. Waters and would continue to do an awesome job. It's, it's just like any other position, you know? If, if you want to hold a seat, then, then you've gotta run. And I believe Lance is doing all the right things to move forward with that.
First of all, it's elected position, you know? And I think, you know, we need, as a, as a, as a society, need to fill that role with somebody that's gonna, that'll step up and wants to do it. I was the only one stepped up. I mean, I'm the, I was the only one who stepped up. So anybody, thousands of other people could have stepped up to do it, but I was the one who was willing to do it. So, you know, regardless, and I, my, I mean, I was wrong prior to doing it. And I told Ron, I said, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna step into this role unless I'm gonna commit to run as well. So, you know, I was passionate about it, willing to do it, and wanted to do it.
One of the questions that we all answered, or those of us that answered the AC Daily Vice question, was do you believe that if there are board vacancies, that they should be filled? And I think every single one of us said yes, those vacancies should be filled after a certain amount of time because you want qualified individuals serving on your board. With that said, you want to appoint someone that is interested in serving. And if that person is also interested in continuing to serve, I think that's perfectly fine. It just shows that value and that interest.
So this is something, I understand the reason for filling it. Unfortunately, Dr. Waters did leave that position. He was absent quite a bit for some time. And so I, I understand the reason. It is difficult to make, to have a quorum for voting, to push things through that need to have an urgency to be, action needs to be taken. So I understand the reason why, but it was an elected position. Would have I, given the timeframe between when it was selected and when the election was, perhaps we couldn't have filled it or shouldn't have filled it. Now, I do believe that there should be a limited amount of time as far as number of absences for meetings. Life does happen, circumstances happen. And so sometimes life takes us away and we can't make the, meet those requirements or meet the, make those meetings. But I understand the reason why it was filled. And Lance is the one that did, he was the only one that volunteered to fill that position.
I would say, my guy says, no, you shouldn't have left the position. I don't think that you should take a position that you're also running for. Also, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the way that all of that went down. I think it is a little bit, it's cronyism, basically. So also, though I understand things, you know, it's hard to function, he says, I'm a little, anyway, but yeah, long and short, no, I don't think it was right.
Mr. Mendoza, if you would just hang on to the microphone, I'll ask you the next question. Do you support student vouchers? Why or why not?
Student vouchers, I'm sorry.
Vouchers are...
My understanding is that students that don't attend the public school system would be allowed to take the money that their parents whatever contributed, an equal amount of money that their parents contributed in tax money, and use that money to either go to a private school or a online school or something like that. Is that correct?
Yes.
Well, thank you for the explanation. I wasn't aware. I would have to have more information. I can't say that I have full knowledge, obviously, about the, about the subject. So I'd need more information, ask the appropriate parties, resources involved, and would later make a decision on that.
Ms. Riley?
I would say absolutely no. I think providing vouchers to students to use at prokial schools or privately, especially prokial schools is a direct violation of church and state. Also, if you look at school districts where they have done this, it has done devastating, devastated school systems. And I don't think that that's something that we want. I think that we have limited resources in the community. And I think when you start giving them up and you start letting students that could attend and receive a quality education, I mean, I feel like there's really no need in this community for private schools. But that is parental choice. And also, it's parental choice and it should be solely funded by the parents, not by the tax dollars that go towards everyone.
I don't know that I think this question is necessarily really relevant for our community. I can tell you, based on my experience of having kids both in a private school as well as public school, when kids are in private schools and they're in the community and you're still a taxpayer, they're still entitled to the services of the public school. So if they are receiving special education services, gifted or otherwise, they still get those same services, whether they're going to a school district to bus to a different school, to have, work with an instructor there, or whether the instructor's coming to the private school to work with them. So I think there's already a joint cooperation in our area between public and private schools. And the other thing I would mention is, yes, we all are taxpayers and we pay money that way, but as far, as far as additional fees, we don't pay fees for our kids to go to public school. They might have individual class fees, but there's not a beginning of the year enrollment fee that we pay for our kids, which is a tremendous service that our community offers.
Yeah, I'd say a pretty black and wild issue. I'd say no. You know, I think if you want to send your kid to private school, you should pay for it. And, you know, I just think that that's what public school is designed for and that's, that's the way we should follow it. So I'm gonna say no.
I also agree, no. And I'm, along with Rhoda, is that I, I have a child, obviously, in prokial school and Lucas also attended prokial school. That is a, a privilege that I choose to send my child to because of religion purposes, not for any other, other reason. I don't think that they get a better education than we do with our public school, because Kennedy has attended both public and private school. And Lucas attended private and is now in public school. I think our schools are amazing. And like Rhoda said, the students at Sacred Heart, I, I'm not sure about ACT, I'm assuming they're the same, but the students at Sacred Heart, our school district has an awesome collaboration because we are allowed to use the bus services and we also use the food service. And we have those teachers that come in from the USD 470 that work with our students who have special needs or have some needs outside of what Sacred Heart can provide. So, no, I don't think that we should provide vouchers because that's my decision as a parent, to send my child to private school. And like Rhoda said, we get, we get those benefits from the public school and we're lucky that we get that and we're lucky that USD 470 collaborates with us. So, and, and no, I don't think that, like I said, my students or my, my children, I don't, haven't got any different schooling from private versus public, because we have a great school system.
And if you would just keep the microphone, this is our last question of the evening. We're just gonna pass it right back down the line. Would you consider an increase in the leeway for local business considerations for bids on projects? It's currently a one percent leeway that is given.
Can you repeat the question again?
Would you consider an increase in the leeway for local business consideration on bids? It's currently a one percent. My experience...
Let me, let me see if I'm understanding correctly. Are you, are you saying that the school district goes outside, inside Arc City for bids of...
The district currently gives favor, more favorable consideration to local businesses in the amount of a one percent variance in the bid. Would you favor a greater increase in that leeway?
Yes and no. I was fortunate to be enough, to be a part of the bond issue where we built onto the schools and also added the high school stadium and then as well as the baseball stadium and learned a lot listening to Dr. Ballard speak about the finances and the bonds and how that affects the community. I think that we should absolutely look first into Arc City to see if that's a service that we, that someone here can provide. And if they are able to do that type of work or that job, look at them first and be able to give that variance a little bit more leeway with someone who can provide those services. I know, like with, obviously, like the high school and the turf and, and the construction, some of that stuff, that's just too large for anyone here to take on. And I'm not sure that anybody here would want to take that on because of the liability, the insurance, everything that goes along with it. So, yes, for, for smaller jobs, I absolutely think that we should give some, some more leeway. That's how we keep our businesses thriving and keep people here. So Arc City first, as long as the job can be done and done correctly and, and right.
Absolutely supportive of local business. We want local businesses to bid on any and all bids that they feel like they can fulfill. I think, you know, ultimately, you know, when we look at the dollars, there's only so much money in the budget. I think ultimately, if, if we're just, you know, if you're talking about ten bucks, then of course, I mean, you wanna go up. If you're talking about two million dollars, you know, on a huge deal, one percent is a lot more than that. So, but absolutely, I mean, we gotta, we gotta shop Arc City first. Arc City's, my, my parents were retail Arc City for thirty-five years. I mean, Arc City's, you've got, we gotta do what we can to support our community and those businesses and TCs that pay taxes.
I'm certainly not an expert in this area, but I will say that one percent to me seems really low. I don't necessarily know why the school district would be one percent when the city, from previous discussions this evening, seems like they give a little bit more of a leeway to that when they're bidding things out. So with more research and where I could be a little more qualified, you know, my answer might change, but right now my gut feeling is one percent does say, does seem low. I also know just from fundraising sides of a parent of kids that are in the school district, it seems like we do rely on our local businesses an awful lot for fundraising and asking them to support the school. So if there's something the school could do to share their resources back, I would certainly encourage that. If it comes down to just, they absolutely could not afford, afford to go with a local business, but the service is the same, then I think they should be able to go back to that business and say, we can't do this, but an out-of-town business can do this. Can you match that? Or it's just constant communication.
The one percent is, is low. I think we absolutely should consider to support the local, one of the, those local vendors. Being the chief technology, chief technology officer for the last ten years, one of my major responsibilities is vendor management. So that includes the due diligence process and determining vendor selection. So the bigger, the biggest obstacles you find when it comes to your, especially your smaller communities and supporting those local bids, is typically around your support and warranty. But absolutely, you should consider extending that just for supporting the local community. Does a lot, generates a lot of revenue in our, in our community. Since I, I think I have more time, and this is the last question, I realize that I did fail to talk about my personal life and my family. I did want to mention that I, again, chief technology officer for Union State Bank for the last year. Before that, I was chief technology officer for Corner Bank. And my wife and I have been married for nineteen years. Next year, we hit the big two to zero. And our kids are in high school, middle school, and elementary, Devon, Cameron, and Kendley. And I've been, loved being a bulldog. I'm Arc City graduate and look forward to raising bulldogs.
Ms. Riley, you get the last word.
As far as the one percent, I think, like I said, it does seem kind of low. I probably, I would really like to see some more information about it and maybe it could be something that could go on a case-by-case basis, like, you know, one percent where, where you're dealing with a really large budget and maybe three to five on smaller items. Thanks to everybody for coming tonight. I know it's kinda late, but thank y'all.
And this does conclude our forum. Thank you all for staying. You fulfilled the first part of your responsibility. The second part is to make sure that you have registered and go vote. Thank you very much. And let's give a big round of applause to our candidates first.